Welcome to our work session. I'd like to call on Board Member Betty Jenkins to open up our meeting. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment's silence. Thank you. Thank you. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, we are now at consideration of the District III vacancy. Is there a motion?
Is that the right one? Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Sorry, different system than over there.
It is.
Yes, I would like to actually make a motion that we table this until the next regular board meeting on February 7th.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes by a vote of, I think we're all here, right? Are we missing somebody? Are we missing somebody? Who? We're missing somebody.
Everyone's here.
Okay, everyone's here. Wonderful. It feels differently, we're spread out. Alright, we are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. A, project ordinance revisions for construction of new and replacement schools. And B, the contractual agreement with DA Everett Christman, a joint venture for the final guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, at the Peck Expeditionary School Replacement School Project. Important to note that the commissioners met less than an hour ago this evening and approved the decrease to the project revision to match the guaranteed maximum price. And that concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Alright, Kim? Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane? And Alan?
Yes.
I missed you over there. And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. We are now reports again. Dr. Oakley?
So I'll invite Michelle Reed and Fay Crowder Phillips. Michelle, of course, our Chief Operations Officer. And Ms. Crowder Phillips is our Executive Director of Transportation. And I can tell you, and you'll see afterwards, that we are indeed lucky to have her. And they are going to provide a transportation update. This is really just an opportunity to kind of understand how some things behind the scenes work. I know as board members, you get lots of questions about transportation, how things work, why things take a certain amount of time. And just wanted to kind of provide an overview of where we are and work that's been done recently and work that's ahead of us. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Reed and Ms. Crowder Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and fellow board members. Today, we'll provide the transportation update for 22-23 school year. As you may recall in previous presentations over the course of 21-22 school year, I advised that the Transportation Department had been on a path to support the improvement of our service offerings for students and families. Thus, the department has focused on supporting the district's educational goals by providing students with safe, reliable, and while striving for excellence in everything we do. This presentation will provide a few highlights of our achievements, and then also provide some insights into some of our barriers to success, as well as forecast for you, how we plan to close the rest of the, close out the rest of the school year. I am pleased to introduce to the board our wonderful Executive Director of Transportation, Ms. Fay Crowder Phillips, who many of you may know by conversations in various ways. But she will walk us through the presentation from here. Fay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to Dr. Oakley and to the members of the Guilford County School Board. I appreciate this opportunity to share in your work session. Today, I will highlight five areas in transportation. Those areas include staffing, transportation routing, the TIM system, the call center, projects, and our next steps. It is no secret that nationally, the vacancy for bus drivers continues to rise. And we are no different with this concern in our district. Our current bus driver vacancy is 53, and safety assistance vacancy is four. We currently have 43 drivers on leave of absence. We are grateful for the generous $1,000 a month bonus offered to our staff because it has helped our district to retain valuable employees. Those that were planning to retire quickly made the decision to stay. And those that wanted to leave us for higher paying positions have also made the decision to stay another year. This was a positive for our department. At our back-to-school orientation, after the announcement that the bonus would continue, we had 15 drivers with 30-plus years that decided to stay another year. We have managed to compensate for our shortages by maximizing our routes, creating community stops, and decreasing the number of buses that are running double routes on a daily basis. Currently, we have 10 buses that consistently run a double route, whether AM or PM. In May of 2022, we strategically looked for opportunities to keep applicants interested in our positions, so the rider system was instituted. These riders have passed the required written test for their CDL, and they're now riding buses to learn the routes, safety techniques, and to assist in managing student behavior. This has been an effective means of decreasing the number of applicants that would often get lost in the hiring process prior to their behind-the-wheel training. Our on-time arrival percentage has increased from 64.1% last year to 84% now. And we are continuing to look for ways to even do better. Our staff morale is on the rise as we offer safety meetings in their zones and quarterly meetings with me as their director for updates and for opportunities to answer and address concerns. My door is always open, and I work hard to address their issues in a timely manner. An example would be our bus advisory committee and the decline in monthly complaints. In January 2022, the list of complaints numbered more than 30. The last three months, the complaints have dropped to five to seven. Currently, there are two driver education specialists, and I will refer to them as DES. They are assigned to the local motor vehicles DMV to train new bus drivers and to recertify our existing drivers. Staffing cuts at DMV over the last two years have contributed to the shortage of the DES. Guilford County has a local district officer in the North Carolina Pupil Transportation Association to advocate for the state level at the state level. Specifically, we need to advocate for more flexibility from DMV so that we can assist in the training process.
And here, I'll just note that CDOs are not just limited to bus drivers. Class A and Class B are required for about 80% of transportation staff because they need to have those for mechanic status to basically move around the mechanic trucks, as well as heavy-duty equipment. So we do need more than just bus drivers to be CDL-licensed.
We are continuing to actively recruit new candidates in order to fill vacant bus driver and safety assistant positions. However, the backlog with the DMV training poses significant hiring challenges. Currently, there are 14 waiting for behind-the-wheel training with the DMV. We are currently 15 mechanics short and have another one who is out on leave of absence, which means I have three bus lots without a permanent or an assigned mechanic. And while we have six mechanics that are assigned to the garage, personnel shortages are requiring three of those six to staff our fuel trucks on a daily basis. Mechanics are responsible for completing various inspections, including the 30-day inspection on all buses. Our inspection score for 21-22 school year improved by 30% of points, which was the best Guilford County had seen in the last 10 years. However, staff shortages continue to impact our work. We are currently offering a $500 monthly performance bonus for the mechanic staff. The state average for mechanic-to-bus ratio in the state is 25 to 1. In Guilford County, it's 38 to 1. Three of our mechanic threes and our shop foremen are eligible right now for retirement. Mechanic threes that serve in the shop are serving as mechanic twos in order to cover our fuel routes, leaving a shortage of five mechanics in the shop. Due to LOAs, a route supervisor is now covering a mechanic-three field route. The mechanics are working overtime to complete tasks and rotating weekend coverage. During the 2021 school year, the Department of Public Instruction inspection was 37.8 for yellow buses and 43.57 for activity buses. Again, this is the best score Guilford County has had in 10 years. I'd like to also note, the lower the score, the more proficient you are. Because salaries for mechanics are not competitive in the current market, recruitment continues to be an issue. Yes, our drivers are essential in transporting our students. But if the bus is not properly maintained or inspected, our drivers will not have buses to drive. Our mechanics are our unsung heroes that work tirelessly in the sun, the rain, sleet, and under icy conditions to keep the yellow buses on the road. They are required to have certain state certifications. For many of their licenses must either be Class A or B with specific endorsements. The tanker endorsement allows them to fuel the buses. The wrecker endorsement allows them to transport buses using a wrecker. They are a critical group in our wheel of transportation. And I express my sincere thanks to them daily for their hard work and their commitment. And yes, these are the same individuals that purchase their own tools for the job. They rotate weekend on call duties, and they ensure that our precious cargo is safely transported. The next area I would like to focus on is routing. You will hear me refer to it as TIMS. It's the Transportation Information Management System, which is comprised of our routing personnel that create the routes for each bus. They assign the students and make sure that our load counts are compatible with the bus. We are currently running 399 buses daily to serve our current ridership of 42,711. Our buses cover three-tier bell schedule and run approximately 41,840 miles per day to service our students. We contract with First Student and Kelly Transit Services. First Student provides coverage for 60 routes, and Kelly Transit provides 20 vans, five students per van, with seven of those covering Aggie Academy. Again, we are only doubling 10 buses across the district on a consistent basis. Fleet reduction. GCS has decreased the number of buses over the last three years despite an increase in student ridership. We have also decreased the daily miles due to the consolidation of bus routes and the implementation of more community stops. Our efficiency rating is 84.26 since 2018. The state will provide a new rating for 22-23 in December. But our current rating, the 84.26, has been on hold due to COVID.
And I'll just note that the efficiency rate is 84.26. If we were able to reduce our contracted services, our efficiency rate would increase. So that's one of the areas that we want to target.
Our routers are currently working on our yearly deassigning students based on ridership numbers from the state load count conducted in October of 2022. The deassignment process will allow us to consolidate more routes and to utilize those buses in other areas to improve current service. Students who are deassigned have not ridden the bus for at least 10 consecutive days, morning and/or afternoon. Our goal of obtaining valid ridership will impact our use of contract service and allow us to use our own yellow buses more strategically and to increase our current state-assigned efficiency score. The call center. The call center has provided services to GCS families since January of 2022. During the first week of school, NET, which is North End Tele Services, received 8,964 calls. 4,031 of those calls were received on the first day of school. NET staffed 39 agents to take calls. They received more calls than their staff could handle during the first week, and an additional six agents were brought on the next week. GCS' current internal staffing model cannot support the number of calls received daily. We meet weekly with NET, and we provide them with immediate feedback with any issues to improve customer service. Issues that require immediate attention are escalated to zone transportation staff and to our leadership team. Our projects. The camera installation project for GCS was completed. The new camera system was installed on all yellow buses and 77 activity buses. Eight activity buses were too old for the install within the system. These cameras provide clear and concise footage for our schools and at least seven angles of viewing from the system. This has provided valuable information to our schools when investigating concerns. The North Carolina School Bus VW Grant awarded Guilford County funds in the second round of awards. We will receive $397,794 for the replacement of one of our buses, along with $89,550 towards the infrastructure. The total award for Guilford County was $487,344. In August of 2022, GCS applied for an Environmental Protection Agency grant that includes five electric buses and infrastructure. We are currently on the waiting list. This week, we applied for the Department of Energy grant that includes 20 electric school buses and infrastructure. The North Carolina State Board of Education approved our transition from the TIMS state-owned routing system to Bus Planner in January of 2023. We are currently securing information in our current system in preparation for the final pull into Bus Planner. Our staff will begin official training in April. There will be a soft rollout of Bus Planner in May using summer school data. All bus routes for 23 and 24 school year will be routed in Bus Planner. Initially, we will be required by the state to route in both systems due to state reports completed in October and to verify data is pulled accurately for our funding and our efficiency score. Next steps. The transportation team will provide parent fairs during the month of May to help parents solidify their students' transportation for 23-24. This will provide immediate hands-on access for parents to ensure their students will have transportation on the first day of school. A transportation recruitment event will be held in the High Point area this spring after seeing the success at the event we held in September in Greensboro of last year. Thank you for this opportunity to present this evening. I hope that I have armed you with some information that will empower you to continue advocating for transportation. I am very humbled at serving this district, our students, our school administration, and the parents, and I'm always open for questions or concerns.
Diane?
My first, thank you for your presentation. My first question is from page four. Is there an age requirement for retirement? I mean, you know, can, can somebody, I'm not talking about age discrimination here, but how old can a bus driver be, or do we have any requirements about how, how old?
No, they have to be at least 18 years of age, but there's no end in age.
Okay, so as long as they can drive and pass and see?
Yes.
And have a bus?
Yes.
Okay, then, did we get the barf bags for the buses?
We did.
Alright, okay, page six. Do we have to use DMV in Guilford County?
Repeat that?
Do we have to use, I assume you're using the DMV offices in Guilford County?
Yes, they are assigned to us.
Right, but do we have to use them?
We do.
Okay, because my thinking is, you know, we're very close to Alamance and some other counties that may not have the load that Guilford County does.
I've tried.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. Okay, on page eight and nine. I would, I think you did try, you did speak to mechanics pay, which is, if I understand, regulated by the state. Is that correct? Mechanic, I mean, yeah, mechanics pay. Is that regulated by the state?
I don't, I mean, based on what the differences are between Charlotte Wake Durham Union, I think it's probably a base, like a schedule, and then there's supplemental things that set the counties apart, just like other, like the teacher supplement.
Okay, well, can I make a suggestion that perhaps we put something in our legislative agenda about trying to get mechanics pay? I mean, we've talked about school, I mean, we've said classified, but, you know, this is a specialty field. And a good mechanic, particularly since there's competition because there are some other mass transit, if they wanted to go that way, opportunities, whether it's City of Greensboro, City of High Point Park, you see what I'm saying? So I'm just wondering if we could add that.
We can certainly add it to the Legislative Committee pending the Chair's approval and bring it up for discussion. It's a good time.
Alright, then, could you speak to working conditions for the mechanics? I heard you say that they have to buy their own tools, and I think that's something we ought to see if we can take care of.
As you know, our facility, our bus garage, has a little age on it. And we would love to have a new facility. But our mechanics have learned, have adjusted to the current environment. Could it be better? Yes. But at this point, our main goal was to get our children back and forth to school. And so we have learned just to maintain with what we have until we are provided something else.
Can I make a suggestion then that we at least get some pictures? If not, a visit for the board to actually see what the working conditions are? Because the working conditions are deplorable. I mean, I understand you got to do some work outside because the bus is outside, but it's, it's not a good working condition. You know, whenever you're in the cold and you're trying to, you know, change oil or, you know, that kind of thing. I think we need to actually see, because she's being very kind by saying that the building has some age on it. It's an old building, period. How many buses are in our fleet?
That are currently on the road?
No. How many total buses are in our fleet?
We have 698 buses.
That's a lot of buses. And then, and do you know what the average age is of our buses?
Our yellow buses, they're rotated out after 20 years or 250,000 miles. And so we are current with our buses in the rotation. In fact, this school year, we will receive 30 additional brand-new buses, and then we can move buses into spare status.
Okay, do we, do we have the option of surplusing buses if?
We do.
Okay. If we go to e-buses, can you kind of? can you kind of explain what that means? From the, you know, mechanics and care, that part of it, not, you know, that it's environmentally friendly?
So the conversion to electric buses would require our mechanics to have additional training because they would need to be certified in repairing those buses. The state of North Carolina, our DPI, has said that training will be offered for mechanics, but I'm sure that we will also need additional training from vendors that provide us with those buses. Because the buses will be brand-new, I've been told that the first year or two, if there is an issue with the bus, in order to replace items in the bus, it's a matter of picking up the item and throwing it away, and it's replaced, as opposed to our mechanics now the nulls and boats of it. So the repair is quite different with an electric bus than it would be for our diesels.
Do you have any idea what the annual maintenance cost for the e-bus will be?
I don't, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, and then on page eleven. And somebody who's better math than me, can you give us the total annual mileage that we do and then the total cost? Our annual cost as opposed to, because I think that when we're trying to convince other people of what we're doing, I think, you know, if they really understood, if we're talking about, we, we travel whatever, forty, forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty is times a hundred and eighty days, you know, and then what that cost is, you know, so that people realize that this is, this is not a cheap, you know, chunk of change, you know?
Correct.
Okay, so can we have the bigger number? Is that okay?
We can get the bigger number. I know that the daily cost to run buses each day is one hundred ninety-two thousand, thirty-eight dollars. But, I mean, if you, we can do the math.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that if people see the big, the big number, then it's like, oh, wow, you know, this is an expensive, you know, thing. And that, and that daily cost includes staff, gas, what all does that include?
It does.
The whole operation.
Okay, all right, and then twelve is the increasing the efficiency rate would have what impact?
It increases your funding from the state.
Thank you. I want you to say that, okay? Okay, so, so there, there's something tied to this here. And so what you're saying is if that, if this efficiency rate we've had, we've been on hold for ten years?
This particular rate has been Guilford's rate since twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay, so we, we potentially have missed out on dollars for
Absolutely, and, and, you know, before twenty eighteen and prior to either of us being here, our efficiency rate has tracked around this number and, and/or lower. Quite frankly, in the state, you know, we're, we're modeled off of others, and we know our peers in, in Char-Mc and Charlotte Mecklenburg and Wake County, they've been consistently above ninety, which means they get ninety percent of the funding, whereas we get only eighty-four percent of the funding opportunity that the state allots.
Okay, if you don't mind, tell me again what would impact increasing our efficiency rate. What would we have to do?
In order to increase our efficiency rate, I need to keep the number of yellow buses on the road at a minimum, enough to transport our students not to waste miles. So that's why it's important that we have decreased our mileage. With the community stops, that has allowed us to decrease the mileage that we run on a daily basis. So in October, the state of North Carolina requires us to count every student that rides a bus. We report that number, we report our mileage, and we, they look at our expenditures for the previous school year, and that in turn will give you your efficiency score.
Okay, so is that the, is that the biggest factor, or are there no other factors to increasing?
There are other smaller factors. Well, contract services is our beast. If we decreased our contract services, our efficiency score would rise immediately. I will tell you, I am driven by numbers. And I have this number on my bulletin board, eighty-four point twenty-six. I have told every driver, they know this number, because I told them, it's important that we raise our number so that our funding will increase. So my motivation is to get our number above ninety.
Do you have, do you have any estimation as to how much our funding would increase?
I don't, but I can, I can find out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty, and then Deborah. I'm sorry, Kim. Yes.
Thank you. Diane answered, asked a lot of the questions that I was thinking about. But I was wondering, how do they determine the mechanic allocation? How many mechanics that we're gonna have to have or not? Or do we determine that?
It's the state average.
Oh, okay, so the state tells us?
Based on the number in your fleet.
Number in your fleet, okay. You mentioned next steps in regard to CTE department. What does that look like, or is that a work in progress? Is that like growing our own?
Yes, so I'm excited about that. The opportunity for us to develop an apprenticeship for students to come into our shop. And what better way for us to expand the knowledge of our students and to prepare them to work on our school buses in the future?
Okay. Yeah, purchasing their own equipment, do they, is there an opportunity for them to get reimbursement?
So in last year, we provided to the mechanics a reimbursement, a very small reimbursement to them, and we did it again this year.
Okay. And I heard you say first student was like the beast on your budget?
Yes.
Is that the only one? Is that the only contract service?
We have Kelly Transit.
Right, you mentioned that.
Yes.
Okay.
But first student is the most expensive.
Right. How, how long have they been in the county?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay, no problem. Because I know they're national, whatever. One card, are students using the one card to, to ride the bus? In the morning, they swipe?
Yes.
Okay, and that's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, and a few of these questions I think are probably going to be aimed at Dr. Oakley. The thousand-dollar monthly bonus, what's our source on that and is it sustainable? Can we keep this going to keep our drivers with us?
It's ESR.
It is, so it's going to expire?
So it would sunset in twenty twenty-four. I think everything we have to think of that's working is what we have to advocate to continue. So tutoring is working, incentivizing bus drivers is working, learning hubs are working, incentivizing mechanics. So, I mean, I think as we're thinking about what we're gonna put our energy behind, this is a great example.
Yep, absolutely, and that's exactly why I asked. Let's see, the rider system, is this, are these hours where they are riding with our current bus drivers? Is that time paid for them to keep them in the loop while we're getting them through? Fantastic, okay. All right, let's see. Same question on page seven about the five hundred dollar a month bonus for our mechanics, is that sustainable?
That's currently out of the transportation budget, not out of the ESR budget. I think that's something we have to think about as we enter the next budget season. We certainly want to keep it. I think potentially increase it if we're able to do that. I think as we're thinking about what we go to the commissioners with and what we put forth in our own budget priorities, it's why I wanted to do this conversation now. Certainly, this isn't the only arm that we have to focus on, but right now, she does that instead of other things out of the transportation budget.
Okay, good. I understand our mechanics have on-call time. Is the on-call time paid also?
It is.
Good. And are we paying for these extra certifications? You listed three or four in there, plus the potential for certification for the electronic buses, the battery buses?
We reimburse after the fact for their license.
Okay, but no incentive past that?
No.
Okay. Making sure. With the services to our, like you mentioned, particularly Aggie Academy, and I know we have middle colleges all over the place, is there opportunity to contract with the City of Greensboro and use heat for those, for the university resources?
I can ask, answer a little bit of that, because I've met with the city manager about this a couple of times, and he certainly has an appetite to think about how to consolidate resources and not require a separate contract, but how to think about if buses are already going to UNCG and GTCC on the regular bus line, how we could pool resources to increase that efficiency. They have the same issue that we do in terms of just staffing shortages and capacity shortages. The problem is that we bus kids from McLeansville to middle colleges, and they don't go out there. So like, you know, there is some element of that that presents a challenge, but there is an appetite for both part and continuing the partnerships with the cities in, in order to do that.
Because I, I would hope that would be a little less worrisome for the parents because, you know, heat is very limited in where they go and, and who can ride and all those kinds of things opposed to the standard city buses. On page fifteen, the calls received into NET. I understand the call overload that came in. Do they give us any kind of a breakdown as to what the complaints and concerns are? So we, okay, so we're able to address, you know, the high, like the, the highest, the highest number of calls prioritized by what's causing the most disruption, I suppose? Okay, good. Because that's, that's a lot of phone calls in one day, and I'm going, it can't be forty thousand different things, it's gotta be some, some closer thing, okay, good. I think that was, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chrissy and then Deborah, I mean Deborah, Betty, I don't know why, I'm just looking at you two.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to publicly thank you for some of your help with some of my own personal transportation woes. So thank you very much for your assistance. First of all, on the call center, to piggyback exactly on what Deborah just asked, is it possible for you to share with us a breakdown of the concerns that are coming into the call center? I'd be very curious to know, is it just late buses? Is it a problem with my route, or I don't know what bus my kid is supposed to be on? What types of concerns are you hearing the most from parents?
Yeah, I think because we get, we get actually weekly updates from our NET service, so we can definitely provide that through and provide actually to the board.
Okay, and then how different is the information that the call center workers have from the information that's on the Here Comes the Bus app? I know, you know, I use that app very heavily every single day, and I know the times that I personally have called in, the call center hasn't necessarily been able to resolve something very quickly, and so I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that process.
So the call center has the very same access that my staff.
Okay.
Our, our access is the same. The Here Comes the Bus issue often comes because a driver may not have selected their route when they got on the bus, or they, their bus broke down, they had to switch buses last minute, and so they didn't get a chance to select the correct route. Other issues, supervisor or the office support got a late change and that wasn't made. But anything that my staff can see, NET can see it as well.
Okay, and then they also have the ability to be able to contact your office if they need to contact a driver, that type of thing as well? Okay, awesome. I'd like to also echo what Diane and Kim both said about the mechanics having to buy their own tools. You know, I certainly hope that we can find room in the budget somewhere to be able to provide people with the equipment that they need. You know, we can look at the numbers and see that our mechanics are some of the lowest paid in the state, and they certainly should not have to be selling out or, you know, shelling out their own hard-earned money on the tools they need to do their job. My final question is related to the efficiency rate, and it's, thank you for your explanation of why that's so important to us and the impact on finances. I'd like to know how much the magnet schools with students who are really spread out very far across, across the county, how does that impact our efficiency rate? And what can we do to find efficiencies in that process when we do have kids who are so geographically spread out?
The community stops is the biggest win for us with the students that are spread out across the district.
And are there plans to implement more of those stops than there are currently to try to continue working on that?
So this year, as the first year that we actually implemented as a pilot for the community stops, we're going to expand that as we go along. But I think too that also, you know, this thinking about magnet schools, we have several, you know, across the district, and so we have our shuttle points. We have various other mediums that we're trying to expand our ideas around, especially with our new routing system coming about. We're re-looking at how we do transportation and how we do routing holistically as it relates to both traditional programs but also magnet programs to make sure that we're thinking creatively how to maximize and optimize, also using models that other districts that have the same, you know, problem with geographical constraints but program need, and, and learn from them. Because, you know, while we, you know, we don't want to recreate the wheel, we want to learn from best practices. And so we're adopting many of those and we'll continue to evolve it.
And will you also be soliciting input from the community, from parents as well to really help drive that as that process continues?
I believe so. I think we love to hear from community members. I think for our efficiency gains, you know, sometimes the choices that we have to make as a district may not align to, to certain things, but we want to make sure that we're thinking about our students first. We want to minimize the time as much as possible of a student's experience on a bus. Our bus drivers start the day with the, seeing a student, and they end the day with that student. And so, you know, the afternoon is sometimes rough on, on bus drivers and students, and so we want to minimize our time of students being on the bus and make sure that we can get them home safely.
Awesome. All right, I think that's all my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Betty, then Kim.
Thank you so much for all you do. I was one of the people who was calling you probably on a daily basis at the beginning of the school year, for my constituents, not for myself. So thank you so much. First question, the equipment costs. Can you give me a rough estimate about the tools that the mechanics was purchasing? That they need to prepare the buses? Just a rough estimate.
A rough estimate? I would say at least, and I don't want to be locked into this, eight to ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I knew it'd be a little high, but I didn't know it was that high, okay. Page thirteen, where you spoke about ten consecutive days students being removed from the roster. What's your process with that as far as you contacting parents, the school contacting parents? What's your process with that?
So the deassignment process includes my routers create the list. Well, let me start from the very beginning. The bus driver identifies those students that have not been on their bus for ten consecutive days. Because we are doing this in January and February, then really it's gone over those ten days that those students have not been on a bus. That list is given to the routers who create a list, and those lists are sent to the school data managers who deassign the students in power school, and that will take the student off the route.
Okay, my last question. So if a student is out due to an illness for fifteen days, and when he or she would go to the bus stop, that child cannot get on the bus?
They can ride, we, I tell my drivers that we never leave a student at a stop. We bring every student in. Now, if the student has been out and we have deassigned that student, the afternoon, we may need to make some arrangements, but they are instructed to never leave a student at the bus stop.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Kim?
Uh, yeah, just a follow-up in, with that question. How would the school communicate to the parent? Like, it sits with the data manager? Because I would expect that if someone is contacting me saying I'm in jeopardy of losing, my child losing ridership.
Yes, the data manager.
But the data manager and the principal, there's usually a letter and then a phone call.
Okay.
So there's different, they try what they can in terms of, but it's not just, oh, you're out of the system and you don't filter it down to the parent. Sometimes they will assign the data manager to do the calling, sometimes the principal will give it to an AP. will give it to an AP, and then they can also generate a letter that says you haven't ridden for X number of days. At this point, this, this is late for the deassignment process, but they've been off for way more than 10 days. But there is a layer between when the data manager gets the information from the supervisor and shares it with the parents.
Right, but in regard to if I'm, my child is sick and I tell the school, is the school talking to transportation saying my child is sick?
Yes.
Okay.
That happens.
Because I'm not hearing none of that here.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. The transitioning from first student, when is the contract over?
I'll need to look at that date. I don't remember.
It's an annual, June 30. I mean, I'm sure June.
So June, the end of June, every year, we have the option to renew. I believe that it was actually enacted for the last, you know, renewal this year, and we, every year, we look at can we do something different? And so this will be no different.
So do you have like a transitioning, a weaning process from first student?
Till we fill those vacancies.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm just, so.
Because I can understand if you, if we sign another contract next year, you know, the heads up or however we are going to wean ourselves, you know? Okay, thank you.
And just remember that a lot of our special buses are first student buses, so a lot of our, those resources are harder because we don't have a fleet of smaller and specially handicapped and equipped buses.
Oh, yeah, I know about that.
And I want to make sure that the board understands the number that Ms. Fay may have thrown out as far as the equipment for mechanics. I want to make sure that we can verify that, so we'll provide some additional information as well.
Thank you. Linda?
At one time, we were working with the city where like students in the city were, are we still doing that?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's working well, I just didn't hear that as part of this whole.
Sure, yeah, and we, we missed putting that in. So our partnership with High Point Transit as well as GTA, Greensboro Transit is ongoing. We actually, this month, are celebrating our one year as this partnership was born, and so we're continuing to work with them, want to encourage students, especially high school students and others, to make sure that they know that's an option, and they can actually show their one card on the bus and utilize that in a routine basis. So we really want to go ahead and encourage that because, you know, if they use that as a routine, it starts to become a model that we want to make sure that we can expand as we go forward.
Can we get that added in, not, not, it's no rush? Just want to see how it's progressing with the number of riders and, you know, and maybe the cost impact of doing that?
Sure.
Since it, because I'm like, did it go away or, you know, so it's still in there. And then when it comes to the mechanics, that is not unusual for the mechanics to have to purchase their own tools. That's actually a standard because what happens when they change jobs, their tools go with them. Tools are also something that's easy to get, lay down and place down, so when it's theirs, you know, you're a lot more cautious about laying your tools down. So I just want to make sure, and they are expensive. So you could have, if we're funding those, you have a mechanic come in for a year, and then you've invested some money that's going out the door. So you have to be real careful. I'm all for helping them, like some reimbursement money and stuff, but, you know, for us, we have to give it some real thought when it comes to purchasing a whole tool set, because generally they take them with them. I mean, now you would have to, and I don't know if we want to get into making sure tools are returned, making sure taking inventory of tools and all that stuff. So I'm just saying you may want to look at how we do that and the impact of that. I'm all for helping them.
And I've, I've managed fleet in different ways, and we've had either the mechanics purchase or we provide. I think the, the public benefit that we've, you know, when I worked for the city, Seattle, they, we provided the tools for the mechanic staff for that, you know, maintain fire apparatuses and EMS vehicles, and it was a really benefit for them to really not have that, and also helped us to have consistent tools on site. So if we needed to shift a mechanic to another garage, they had a set that was consistent, and allowed us to build that inventory, which was a great model for us.
Okay, well, I would just like to hear more about that. If it works, more power. I'm just saying there needs to be a system and needs to be a way to, because tools are very expensive.
Absolutely.
And you don't, you know, so you need to keep up with what you got and where they're at. And I believe that, that's it. Thank you.
Diane?
Okay, can you speak to how safe our children are on public buses? Because if I recall, a year ago, one of the big pushbacks were, was that our children wouldn't be safe on our public bus. Have, I mean, as far as have you had any incidents or, you know, what has been, has there been the feedback from either parents or students about having that, what I consider additional flexibility?
Absolutely. So our students that ride the bus, ride it routinely, and they have no issues. The bus drivers may have some, you know, constraints with the students sometimes when they, you know, get into little scuffles, but that's typical. Having public transit is a benefit that all should be taking advantage of. You know, being involved with that community benefit is really helpful, not just for the students to get, you know, experience being on a bus, because, you know, if they leave Guilford County and go to a city like, you know, Washington DC or other places where mass transit is a normalized thing, it really helps them to have that, you know, skillset already built in when they get into those environments and be able to navigate a city. It's just building another skillset and also understanding that it's not a scary thing to ride a public transit, and we should encourage folks to do it.
Well, speak to that as, as it relates to, you know, we have folks who come here about our carbon footprint kind of stuff. I mean, about how many kids are taking advantage of that? And doesn't that help us as far as, you know, improving our, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, so if we think about all the things that we just talked about and covered in this presentation, you know, the, the reduction in the amount of buses helps both the staffing that we have, you know, our reduction in buses that are riding, idle time, all of those go hand in hand. So the amount of students that we ride on a day-to-day basis, even the deassignment process, if we know that people are normalized and using public transit, it actually helps and has another tool in our toolkit, but it also helps us to say, you know what? That's great. 1,200, you know, almost 2,000 students are riding mass transit. Let that be the medium that we utilize instead of both running yellow buses plus mass transit, which may not be full. In both cases, utilizing those resources to really maximize us as a full community and not just incrementally. Absolutely.
All right, I just have a few questions. One, the calls received, is this normal for this, for those times of year or, or have they?
Yes.
I know Ms. Crowder Phillips has done such a great job. I was just wondering, and I think good leadership, people feel listened to, they feel as though their concerns have been heard, if not resolved. And so are these consistent with the, the sort of pattern of calls, number of calls that we get during these months? Or is this just a, is this just what has happened in the last six months?
So both of these are people, thank goodness, are here now, but were not with us pre-COVID. And so I think we would need to do a data collection, because I don't think we can use 1920 or 2021. I do think it model, it's similar to last, to 21, 22.
It is, and so what we saw, we, we pulled the data for that year, which actually spawned the conversation around needing a call center, because we were not able to handle the call volume, and it was disparate. Data was lost, so we didn't know how, what types of things we were getting calls on, and we weren't able to track ourselves. And so, you know, in November, you know, I brought the call center to the board as an opportunity because we wanted to standardize, you know, our customer service, but also know what was happening, what, what concerns we were experiencing. So at that point in time, call volume was very similar that we see in, in our start of the school year, and we expected that this year. I think that, you know, we'll continue to see that, this trend in the data.
I was looking to see if I downloaded the tracker. I mean, my kids are in their 30s, but I've been outside with my neighbor's kids, because my front yard is a bus stop, and so I've been out there and called you and have been trying to track down a bus for someone, and so, and I haven't gotten any calls or emails, and I think so there's been a huge decrease in the, the contact that I've had with people that have had a problem. So thank you so much for, you know, wanting to provide good customer service and for advocating for our employees, because I, I think so many of the things that I wanted to, had questions about or wanted to say have been covered, really great questions and concerns shared by the board members from the tools to the compensation to the support. The last thing is the inspection status. What, what would, what would improve this for us? On page eight, the instruction inspection score, what are the kind of things that we could do to, even though it's the best that we've received in 10 years? What are some of the things that are, you know, a condition or a criteria for an inspection score?
So the inspection occurs annually, where a state inspector will come in and inspect 10% of your fleet, and that consists of yellow buses and activity buses. The inspection usually occurs five to seven days when the state inspector is here, and he will travel from lot to lot to inspect random buses. They inspect not only our buses, but they inspect our parts room, verify our inventory, inspect all of our equipment, and they randomly go through paperwork to make sure that we are accountable to the state. And so all of those factors contribute toward our inspection score.
So for context, in 2019, 2020, our score was around 67, and we were at 37. I think that, to your point, good leadership definitely helps to enforce where we want to go, but the relationship with the inspector and knowing what deficiency areas we should be targeting is also something we should be making sure we utilize to improve the operations that, you know, are under Fay. So we've been modeling new behaviors in our parts room, our inventory management, some of the key areas that they kind of gave us some heads up on that we should be looking at. So we expect that to continue to improve.
Thank you. And the deassignment process is something we're just implementing now?
Yes.
And it, when did we start? This year?
Yes, January.
Oh, just January? Okay, yeah, I'm curious to see how that's, how that's going to go. And I'm really interested, because that's really intriguing information about all of the ways that we can think about efficiency and energy and other costs associated with that, and just making sure, you know, kids are safe. And so, so thank you for sharing that and look forward to the update on how that's working.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more questions? We are now at the emerging direction feedback, and Dr. Oakley, you're up again.
All right, this one is, I need feedback from board members on, and that's what we're going to use this time for. It's pretty brief, and I do, I am appreciative of board members who have been able to come to some of the community sessions so far. We've had several, some commissioners, Commissioner Austin was able to come just earlier this week, and it's just been helpful to hear from different groups of, of people. And so last month, we talked a little bit about what we were hearing after the first 100 days as, in my position, and I included feedback from our first round of community conversations. And we talked a little bit about this already, but at this point, we've met with well over 2,000 stakeholders and hosted more than 70 meetings in town halls to gather feedback to inform our strategic direction. And in the last two weeks, we had two additional community conversations, one this week, one last week, where I shared kind of what we heard to see if it sat well with them. So it was kind of like, here's what we heard at the beginning, does this sound right to you and what are we missing? And so I've also been able to present this information to our transition team, and next week I meet with the different advisory councils, including parents, teachers, and principals. Lots of people have come and have had really good feedback. This is just kind of a snapshot. We've had faith leaders, fraternities, sororities, business community members, and people have lots to offer. What's been intriguing is how similar across groups what they're offering is. And so during these better-together conversations, we asked our community a series of questions to reflect on where the district has been and where we are now and determine a shared vision for the future of GCS. The questions included what is compelling about where we've been and what we've accomplished over the last five years? What else would you like to see prioritized based on your lived experience in our community? What do we need to prioritize in order for our graduates to be successful? And what do we need to focus on? I think we all know that we're in a different time than we were two years ago, three years ago, and certainly five years ago. And so tonight, the goal of this work session presentation is to share again what the community has said and ask you some questions about, that will be able to inform our work as we move forward. So I'll start with what people have said is compelling. And in terms of our current work, what people have said across the board includes increased support for students following COVID-19, please don't get rid of tutoring, please keep learning hubs open, make sure that we're able to continue summer programming for students who are struggling. The work being done to close gaps between white students and black and brown students. I think there's some community recognition for things like the homeless task force and the safety conversations that are happening across systems. So not just the school solving these concerns, but how our community as a whole has to continue to address this and not just talk about it, and it's going to take all of us at the table. The expansion of mental health supports and school safety measures, not surprising, you hear it in public comment and in emails that you get. The historical bond to address critical infrastructure needs, people keep talking about this, want to make sure that we include building and fully renovating schools in priority order. And in this conversation, every time is also the safety and technology upgrades. So those are kind of connected pieces that we've heard. Also is compelling the wide range of educational and co-curricular programs available to students. It's no secret to any of us that people like choice. The Choice Fair is next week, and of course, having the highest number of the middle and early colleges continues to come up, like making sure that we keep access to those types of programs. The advocacy for competitive pay scales that attract and keep the best and the brightest, not unlike the mechanic conversation. I was able to meet in person with all of the custodial staff, and they talked a lot about competitive pay scales and compression and like how this plays out for lead custodians and new custodians. And so we talked a little bit about advocacy around that and how to, you know, as we move into budget season, how we balance all of the things that are important. Teacher supplements are important. Hiring mechanics is important and fair compensation. And then the enhancements in school transportation, so timely, but people notice that things are getting better in the world of transportation. And yes, the beginning of the school year, we can always expect some bumps, but they seem to have evened out and are improving as we move on. Just a quick example I want to share with you, two examples of our increased support for students. The first example is high dosage tutoring. So far this year, our learning recovery efforts have expanded, where we've already increased the number of students tutored by 261% this year compared to where we were last January. We've also increased the number of tutoring hours by 402% and the number of tutoring sessions by 484%. So just this year, we've tutored 5,438 more students than the total number of students who received tutoring in the 21, 22 school year. We've completed more than 100,000 tutoring sessions compared to last year. So people are taking advantage of the learning recovery efforts that are happening. The learning hubs are another example. The numbers are growing. The number of students who are attending these evening learning hubs in our comprehensive high schools increased by 104% compared to where we were a year ago in January. And as of this week, we've served 5,418 students in those programs. So from the part around what's compelling, from the, from where you said as a board member, as a community member, are there things that resonate? Are there things you think that are missing? And do you have any questions about what I've been able to share about what people have said are compelling?
What is the cost? For which? For high dosage tutoring is for our K through eight, right? Am I correct?
No, it's K-12.
Oh, high dosage is also for K-12, but the learning hubs?
Are only at our comprehensive high schools.
That's where it's only, okay. Only the comprehensive, not the middle colleges are not eligible?
Mm-mm.
Thank you.
I could say I'll start with the tutoring cost, and that our SIR funds are about $3 million a year for tutoring. million a year for tutoring. And we have, Kathy Manning's advocated for some additional tutoring funding. The learning hub started with a Walton Family Foundation grant for $800,000. And I don't know the exact number that's built in annually following that grant, do you?
It's around, it's close to the same amount of the high dosage tutoring. And just this month, we got $2.2 million from the community grants that Congresswoman Kathy Manning advocated for to expand the learning hubs to middle school.
So, when won't we need that?
Way beyond when our SRF funds expire. I mean, we won't need that when all kids are proficient and don't need extra support.
Okay.
Linda, then Diane.
How do we, you know, because I've had some parents say, well, we're supposed to have tutoring. How is it determined where the, is it all schools have this opportunity, but sometimes we just don't have the staffing? Or, you know, because I have heard a couple of times that, you know, they've gone to the school and said, I want to participate in this, and then they were told that they didn't have.
So, we're hiring every month. And so, schools have a spreadsheet where they enter the tutors that they need and the subject areas that they need them in. As we hire, we place the tutors at those schools. I will tell you that we prioritize the highest, like the tutor, the graduate assistants who are math majors at A&amp;T. We're pairing up with our secondary students who are at risk for not graduating because of math. So, it's really intentional pairing. They may have to wait for that next hiring phase, but all schools have access to tutors. We don't have enough. I mean, we need to keep hiring until we have enough tutors to serve every student that needs a tutor. And so, we're continuing those hiring and those outreach efforts. I will say, we do have on-demand virtual tutoring that anyone can access. So, you can schedule an appointment for the following afternoon or evening, and those are mostly staffed by our teachers. So, you log on to a link and you can have a tutoring session the next day. And you could, that, that's been successful as well on a virtual platform that everyone has access to.
Okay. Now, is this all one-on-one or small groups? Because, you know, sometimes if you're a fifth grade math student, you have three or four people, students in fifth grade math that could use the, and it's on the same subject matter. So, is this one-on-one at all times or should we be looking at, you know, small group tutoring? Because it can be just as effective if you've got two students, three students as one-on-one if it's the same subject matter that they're working on.
If it's more than three, it's not tutoring. It's small group instruction and it's not quite as effective. And so, the research around high dosage tutoring is no more than three students and it has to be targeted. The majority of what's happening is individualized. Because no, very rarely did two students experience the same kind of learning loss. Like, I talk about this a lot for students who finished fifth grade remotely and did the first half of their sixth grade year remotely. And if they miss the end of fifth grade, they miss applying ratios and proportions to real life. And if you miss that, that has implications for Math I, Math II, Math III, ACT. So, it's, it has to be individualized in order to be effective.
Diane?
Okay. Did discipline issues come up at all and how we're addressing them? And I know that's kind of broad, but at the same time, I've heard a lot from staff about, you know, children off the chain.
It came up in this next piece, which is around possible priorities.
Okay. All right. Then, diversity. I know at least whenever I was at Dudley, you did get a number of calls about how we are addressing, I mean, Guilford County is, you know, becoming or has become more diverse in a lot of ways and is going to get more diverse, particularly with the mega site and some of the new, you know, construction companies that are going to be coming here because folks are going to be coming from all over. And so, I think you said that at Smith, that there were 100 and, or at one school, that there's 100 and some odd languages being spoken. And how are we handling that? Because I would think that most of the teachers that you hired are English-first teacher, speaking-first teachers, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you didn't get the question out of that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, you know, we have two separate, I mean, we have interpreters for our most frequent languages. What we need to expand is this parent advocacy. What I've heard are challenges for our immigrant and refugee family and parents who don't speak English as their native language is how to figure, how to work through this system. It's a complicated, I mean, here comes the bus app and how to register and how to enroll. And so, what we, I mean, aside from the fact that we send our EL team out all the time, we have interpreters who are on-call, we also are thinking about ways to have parent-led advocacy. And so, we try to share the access to the EL office as the first point of contact because they can then route the calls to the different interpreters of the different languages, get things out in print and translated form when people can read that. That, that also is helpful. But those are some of the ways that we've done that. What we need to do is have some of this grassroots parent, is what we heard. They want to have their own pathways to learn, better learn how to navigate systems in their own language, not translated to, by somebody else and handed to them.
Okay. And then, on the tutoring, when I taught GD, one of the tools that was in math that was very helpful was like Khan Academy. Okay, do we, you know, also encourage those kinds of, because I would think Khan Academy's more of a self-guided tutoring kind of thing, but was, was effective. And then, have we tried recruiting from retired teachers groups? Or they're just too tired to come back?
No, we have some retired teachers who are tutoring. We do.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. It's good in some areas. We, you know, I think it's a tool that tutors know exists. It's not always the right thing, but it can be helpful, especially when there's the videos that kids can go back and watch is what we have found.
Deborah?
And to your, to your question Diane, at least in the, in the regular curriculum in math, they tend to be using Khan Academy pretty regularly. I know that like over the winter break, my sixth grader had Khan Academy assigned to where they had things to complete and things and stuff like that. So, it's definitely is showing up. And hats off to Ed Kimbrough, the music teacher who goes between northern middle and northern high. Didn't, didn't Mr. Kimbrough retire and come back if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so.
At least once.
Because God bless him, she switched from flute to tenor saxophone over the winter break. And he's been, he came back and has been tutoring her. And I've been working with her in the evenings and she, you would never know that she's only had that instrument three weeks. It's a miracle and saved me quite a few headaches, I'm sure. Because when the, when she plays the saxophone, the baby likes to, yeah, scream back at the saxophone. So, once she, once he started working with her and got that under control, life has been much better. So, to answer both of your questions, if that helps at all, yeah, we do both. Let me ask, one thing I did want to bring up, we are talking about the bond and how we're going in priority order with the facilities master plan. The one thing that keeps coming up when I go to different schools and talk to different people for concerns for those schools is how in the facilities master plan did they address the mobile units that have been out in the schools for quite a while? It's like Mendenhalls are in quite a shape, you know, Northwest High just refurbished theirs. Was that, since those are not part of the actual hard structure of the school, were they considered?
But they were in the score. The mobile units were in the score.
They were in the score, okay.
And the eliminating them over time was also built into the plan. So, which schools have which capacity was designed with the intent of not having them.
Okay, all right. So, as we get farther into the bond, we can hopefully see those mobile units start to disappear. Fingers crossed.
We're hopeful. I mean, I can say that at the mobiles that are at Jesse Wharton, the city, without saying this, but recognized that none of the mobiles are really temporary. And so, they, before they would permit us to put the mobiles in, we had to pour individual concrete footings underneath them, which is part of the timing issue. So, but yes, the phasing out of the ones that are falling apart were taken into consideration for the score and are part of the phasing of the facilities plan.
But will we have capacity issues at Jesse Wharton after we pull Claxton back out to their own, to their new facility?
We won't have, I mean, no. I mean, that's part of the phasing conversation, but it'll be swing space for something else next.
Fair point. Okay, thank you.
This probably isn't doable, but is, is there any way to track and measure the recovery of, of, of learning? Because I, I am really concerned when this, those, this funding ends and, and the, the efforts that, and the successes, you know, the growth that the children are making or the recovery and then to plummet afterwards. So, is there?
The Council of Great City Schools is probably going to do the best job of that. I mean, that's what we're talking about is like, who's doing what? How are we measuring it? How do we compare across the country? Because people are doing like things. And they've talked about how NAEP scores could play into that because it's the whole country, right? And so, how our reading sixth grade scores are probably not going to give us the data that we need. But I think that Council of Great City Schools is going to be the data, is going to be the one that's on first to be able to answer that question. And there is a work group at the council focused on that. We are doing full program evaluations of both learning hubs and tutoring locally in partnerships with universities so that we can output that for our own local context.
Yeah, and part of my concern is, is that while we'll show growth, we might just put the gap right back where it was. And so, how do we move that needle? Because I think as we're talking about the gaps, and the gaps aren't, again, just among and between our low-performing students, that we have gaps at every performance level and we have them really at every indicator of, of measures of students. And so, I'm not sure if the equitable access and outcomes is going to cover everything because it's, you can have access to rigorous instruction, but things that are required, require an adult to identify, to recommend, to inform, still happen inequitably. And then, there are other ways that students aren't, you know, there are bridges and there are other ways that students fall behind. And so, and maybe you can just say something. I think we've done a great job and a lot of other places can do better with CTE awareness. And I, Ms. Reed, I think as we're getting ready to kick off our historically underutilized business committees, those are also opportunities at those meetings to, you know, for people to have more information about the careers that are discussed and the, the people that are there that attend the meetings and the careers that they're in and the, and the, you know, the, the income and the, I don't even want to say salaries, but what they could, what they can do in those areas. And so, I think there are some places where we're at a good place and will continue to grow and advance. And there's some other places that I think aren't going to move us past where we were.
Any others?
Yeah, I have a comment to make. Thank you very much for coming out to Dudley High School on last night, or yesterday evening. I would say the parents, the community really enjoyed the presentation. They had lots of questions and you all gave lots of answers. I think they are thirsty or hungry for some more. I can tell that they really want to stay a little longer and ask all that more question. So, hopefully, we can put another one together in the southeast area of Greensboro very, very soon. Thank you.
Keep going. Okay. So, the next thing we talked about was possible priorities and some similar themes, but I think these are meaningful. I, we also met with parents of, by themselves, parents of students with individualized education plans at one separate session and then parents of students who speak English as a separate language in a separate session. And they had some interesting and good feedback for sure. But a lot of people talked about raising awareness of on-demand workforce development career paths and other programs available to students, that we do that too late, that getting the options and what the credentials could be and what kind of jobs, what kind of wages they would earn in ninth grade is too late. And so, how we can better get that to people in a meaningful way earlier. Improving access to higher education and knowledge-based jobs, increasing community forums, to Ms. Jenkins' point, between senior district staff, particularly with classified staff, the child nutrition, the facilities, and the transportation staff want us to come back and say, we heard you and now this. And don't want that to be a, just because you're new here in this position and you came one time. So, they were very clear about come back and share what, what you're doing about it and here are our concerns. They wanted to strengthen communication and relationships between schools, families, and students, increasing intentionality to involve parents. I think parents are saying they're experiencing such different communication from school to school and level to level and that there's this loss when you leave the elementary school where you were for six years and go to this new middle school where you'll only be for three years. And I used to get this call on Sunday nights and I used to get this, like they feel that and it's personal. And so, that, the intentionality, and it doesn't have to be the same across the board, but it needs to be consistent across the board. And so, they talked about that. Additional safety strategies and mental health supports for students and staff. This one is where the discipline conversation came up. And it was about calibrating on the code, the code of conduct, revisiting the code of conduct. How are consequences being applied to whom and is it fair? And are, is it consistent? And so, that, that kind of came on this priority of calibrating on it and the implementation. And is it up to date? Vaping is not in code of conduct from seven or eight years ago. It's just not. And so, like, there's just a, it's a new time. And so, being able to have some calibration on that. And then, they asked for more opportunities for the community to learn about the budgeting process. So, I'm sure Tara is excited to go on the road and share more with the community about the budgeting process. But they did, that did come up across a couple different groups. They said that we need to work on as a priority, building a strong professional culture where staff and teachers feel supported and respected and appreciated. They talked about addressing staff schedules and impacts on childcare, addressing student schedules and how that's impacting athletes and the ability for students to have school, after-school jobs. They asked for more time for school administrators to focus on instruction and strategy. You know from the emails you get that many of our principals are in this reactive place where they're doing crisis management and talked about how we could get back to when there was more time to focus on instruction and strategy. Providing meaningful integration of technology into academics, making sure that just because we have devices, they're not being used as a babysitter and making sure that they're a meaningful tool in the instructional realm. They don't want them to go away. They just want to make sure they're being used meaningfully. Offer clear ways for community partners, parents, and others to support the district and schools. So, there's all these people that like want to help, but they don't know how or how to get in or who to call. And so, thinking about what a, a common menu would be of, here's ways you can help that are clear, they're aligned to what we're doing, and here's what the contact is. Integrating impactful and relevant professional development into the calendar for all levels of staff. I'm sure we'll have discussion on February 7th before we vote on a calendar, but feedback that said, don't put all the professional development in August. Spread it out. We heard from teachers at the different meetings. And then, making sure that we increase consistent practices with clear and meaningful data. People like data, but they want it to know when they're going to get it and how to interpret it. Then, we talked about what our graduates need to be to be successful, like what skills they need to have. And we just kind of floated this portrait of a graduate. A group of parents, students, school staff, district staff kind of came up with these concepts and we just floated it with these different groups. And what they said, our community said that graduates need strong written and verbal communication skills, they need critical and analytic thinking skills, early and frequent exposure to professional opportunities, they need to know how to be civically engaged, team building and collaboration, personal vision for their lives and careers. And this was, came up, which I think is true and interesting just from the parent seat, this focus on addressing the gap in expectations for students at kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade at those transition points, like how we can do a better job of addressing what the expectations are to help to help them be successful when they enter those transitional grades. It's not unlike the communication loss that people have when they leave one school and go to another school. So, wanna hear from you around the possible priorities. Is there anything that resonated that we're missing or that thinks you have questions on that people brought up?
Chrissy?
I don't know that this is really a question, but maybe more a comment, which is, well, number one, thank you very much for getting out into the community. In particular, High Point, I know I've heard from many people, you know, we've all had the conversation that High Point kinda feels like the redheaded stepchild of Guilford County. And people are very excited that you're reaching out and saying, like, let's have these conversations. So thank you. I heard you really mentioning in this past section two key points about consistency and also communication. And I just sort of wanna say, like, these are things that I've heard repeatedly in almost every aspect of concerns, questions, everything from parents, from teachers, even students. Is, you know, things have been implemented inconsistently from school to school. And of course, obviously, we, we want school administration to have autonomy to run their own school the way that suits its appropriate needs. But there also has been, at least in the past, huge disparity in what's happening from school to school. So I, I like the fact that there's a focus on trying to establish some consistency. And also communication, that's the other really big thing that I've heard in particular from parents. People reach out, they have a question, you know, nobody has called them back or I can't get an answer. I don't know who to talk to. So I feel like those are really good points to be focusing on as priorities moving forward.
Deborah Kim. Diane?
Let's see, under the possible priorities, the second one is improve access to higher education and knowledge, oh, sorry. On, on page nine, possible priorities, your second one is improve access to higher education and knowledge-based jobs. Can you give me what you're defining as knowledge-based jobs?
I can't remember the group that said it, so I'm not gonna pretend that. I do think what they mean, a lot of them talked about jobs that are matching the business, the growing business industry that require very specific training. And so like the, at Dudley, we heard where are the people who are gonna be able to do advanced manufacturing jobs? And so it was, it was like specific, I mean, all jobs are knowledge-based, right? But it was more about like specific skill sets, like we're hoping to develop at Faust Gaming and Robotics, where we have this kind of pathway into a very specific career field that takes specific training. It must, it came up at more than that. That's just the most recent example that I have.
Because the place, you know, we're, we're working a lot with, I think, our institutions of higher education. I think we do a great job with A and T and U N C G with partnerships. But the one place that still seems to be just kind of a vagary, at least when I talk to, and look into the training opportunities that we have at the different high schools is your, your, what's the word I'm looking for? Like contracting-style jobs, you know, what do we have that would interest someone that would want to be an electrician? Or a plumber, or a carpenter? Because these are skill sets that are already in need in Guilford County. It's not building on something that's coming. This is a need here and now. And, you know, if, if someone comes to me and wants to know, hey, you know, if I wanna be an electrician, what does an apprenticeship look like? I don't know how to answer that and I don't even know where we would go to do that. So, you know, that was, that would be something that I would hope that we would define and pursue in the knowledge-based jobs.
Well, and we do have a booklet of the pathways we offer, the credentials they come out with and what the classes are required. So if there's a need to further, I mean, they're, we're generated by CTE, but we can take that as a to-do to make sure that those are available in general. To, I mean, it's just like kind of a handbook of what we have aligned to the career path. That's the, that's where my cheat sheet lives.
Fair. And the other thing is, is you know, when we're looking at the website and looking at the magnet schools and the different offerings, do we put that information out there for people? We use, you know, we can use nursing as, as an example because I get the question all the time. What do you do with the CNA? Well, why should I go get a, a two-year associate's instead of a four-year bachelor's? What does an LPN do? So, you know, same thing with, with plumbing and electrician pathways. What is the basic education? What, what, how long does the apprenticeship last? Do I get paid? Are these things that when people go to look at the offerings that we have, quite, basic questions that we can answer? Because a lot of these students that want to pursue these things are looking at employability after they graduate. Is this something that can sustain me? And when it comes to the nursing thing, I can look at them and say, yeah, you know, if you wanna get your CNA wire in high school, that is definitely a sustainable job while you go get your RN or your BSN or whatever. But do we offer that information about, about these things?
Not early enough and not clearly enough is what we heard. What we do do a good job of is like the magnet choice options, you know, that gets to people. But the pathways that happen like in a high school track, they want to get in front of sixth graders, seventh graders. And so that's something that we have to work on. That's what we heard.
I do like the very last one, the more opportunities for the community to learn about the budgeting process because I had only a fa- vague grip on it when I got here. And let me tell you what, reading through those manuals might have been worse than actual nursing, you know, textbooks. So I do think maybe we could, just a suggestion, maybe like a series of webinars or short, short something for everyone to access. I do like the idea of having meetings in the community and talking these things out, but with recognition that not everybody would be able to make it to that. And, you know, one of the things that's helpful about a thought process is being, being able to refer back to the material. So maybe something a little bit more, I don't wanna say permanent, maybe a little bit more accessible?
Thank you, Kim, and then Diane.
Uh, yeah, I'm glad to see that people wanna communicate. Cause I do feel like we have so many things for parents to log into that it drove me crazy, that I have to go to Parent Academy and have a login over here. Or that teachers were using, you know, dojo and then this other teacher was using something else to talk to me and, and the kids. I just feel like I wish we had one way at every school level to invest in one communication package for parents. Where we can, all the teachers are using it and it's just streamlined to like one thing. Because having all those logins, you, it's just, it just gets crazy in Guilford County that I have to remember all the, all the passwords for this class, that class. And when you have multiple children, that, that's hard to work with. So I don't know if we're gonna invest in, there are a lot of packages out there that we can look into that I hope that, you know, that we will consider, you know, one communication for everybody to use in Guilford County. Are you going to talk about the virtual schools in this at all? Cause I didn't look through it completely. Cause I did have a question about the virtual schools. Is it appropriate now to ask that question? Because I received the phone call in regard to the students not accessing the sports program because they chose to use, you know, the virtual. So what statute or not, or how, what advocacy are we looking at? Because I kinda feel like it's inequitable that if I choose the virtual school because it's a better way for my child to learn, but then my child can't go to their home school and access the sports programming.
I mean, the rationale on the onset was if you can't come to school face-to-face, you can't play sports face-to-face.
Why?
I mean, I think we all know that only a very small number of students excel in the virtual environment.
Right.
And so that's just how it was set up. I mean, I think the board could certainly revisit that concept. But students, only a very small number of students excel in the virtual environment.
Right, so I'm.
And many are chronically absent.
Okay. Well, I'm, of course, we're not talking about those students. But the fact that someone makes a choice and their tax dollars are paying for other kids to access the sporting program. And when I choose virtual, it just seems like there's an inequity there. Just because I choose the virtual academy that we established, that we gave them the choice, that then they are not allowed to play sports.
I think the board can certainly revisit that if there's a will to do that.
Okay. And I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, and then Alan.
Okay, um, I think I counted sixteen of possible priorities. Okay, do you have enough staff to do this? Because we're gonna have to talk about that. I mean, I'm not talking about trying to fill the teacher vacancies. I'm talking about, you know, because you can only, you have a good working team. But you cannot pile more responsibilities out of this stuff on them. Otherwise, you're gonna begin to not be effective. So I think there's gotta be a conversation for us because that means money.
Well, it's also why it says possible.
I know it does, but.
Right.
Have you thought about, I mean?
I mean, we have, but I've also thought, I mean, and we'll, we'll, I'll kinda show you what's emerging as the top kind of five buckets that are not sixteen or thirteen or, you know. Cause we can't, I mean, we can do all the things, but what this is about is thinking about what, what we focus our energy on, how we measure whether we're making progress or not, how you evaluate me, how we hold departments accountable, like that's where we're getting to with this work. And so the hope is that we have this conversation and then we come back with a kind of a package and that will inform our goals and our progress as we move forward. Are there enough staff? No. I mean, you know, but I think we, we also need to be careful about what we advocate for. And so we'll do that in a strategic way. But clearly, we have to find mechanics and pay them. Like we, you know, there's other things operationally that we have to do. But we can't, you're right, we can't do eighteen things in a mediocre way. We need to pick the ones that will give us the biggest return on investment that we can measure. This is just the pulse check on, is the direction the right one given where we are right now? And does it capture the voice of all people? That's the intent of this.
Okay, but at the same time, I think you, you do have to look at who you have and who you're gonna need. Even if with the, with the five.
Yes, that's true.
Which means that there could be some requests for.
There could, yes.
All right. I've brought this up before and maybe I'm just too old to do it, okay? But our website, I feel like, is hard. I mean, and, and even though, and, and I'll be honest, sometimes I had to call, uh, the clerk and say, how do I get to things? You know, but see, I have access, but, so what can we do to, to make this thing? Cause this is one of our key pu- uh, pu- uh, portals of entry for people to get information. And I don't know how to fix it. I, I mean, I know it can't be all things to all people perhaps, but it's not easy to, uh, so I, I, you know. And, and it might be that you need to have some input from other users to find out what might make, you know, what, what makes sense. Okay? Cause I, I mean, I pulled it up right here. I'm looking at it right now and it's, it's hard. And that's all I can say. We can have an offline conversation and maybe I need to be tutored.
No, it's on our list. It's, it's on this next phase in the spring to revisit. You got, you have to bid it out. You have to see what people can bring to the table. So we're, we're in the process and you're right. And in terms of navigating things, I had to have a password reset twice yesterday. I'm with you. Like, I, I, I understand. And we've had conversations about Canvas and couldn't we just click this instead of entering two different things? But there's also a balance of the security of student data and how passwords need to change and what lives back there. So I think the website, though, is good feedback and timely.
Okay. You said in here about having the students know more about different fields and stuff like that. You know, and I just wanna make a suggestion, do we still have a business relations person? Didn't we have, wasn't that?
We have, I mean, we have community relations. I don't think we have a specific business relation.
Okay, because if you had someone who had the time to perhaps, you know, look at, at professional organizations that exist and see if they are willing to, like, you know, I know that there's a medical society. I know that there's a lawyer society. I know that there's, you know, these various businesses, you know, and, uh, uh, associations to try to figure out how they might help us to expose kids to.
We have a business advisory council and we have a person that does business coordination in CTE. But it probably isn't reaching all the places that it needs to.
Okay. Then my last one has to do with, and this is some feedback, okay? You have an organization that would utilize some of our kids in specific training areas. But what, what the feedback from the organization is, is that it is extremely hard to connect to getting that opportunity for the kids. Okay? And I don't know, I mean, it falls in the area of CTE. And, but if we want people to say, okay, I have a, a training opportunity for your kid, what do we need to do? And this person is like, he's, he's kinda throwing up his hands because he says, it, it's just not, you know, cause some people he had personal relationship with, they're not with the system anymore. So, but right now he's building ten little tiny houses, but he, he could use our kids to, but.
Well, that's what we heard, was it's too hard to help. Like, we need to be given three or four ways that we can help. Who, who's gonna call me back? What's, you know? But we can't have, like, we're gonna have to narrow our focus and give this to people and have them show how they can help. I don't think that we can save the world of frustrations in a large organization that's got its own bureaucratic, you know, and, and all these schools. Yeah.
Okay, but, but this is someone who you have been involved with before. And I'm just saying that's the kind of feedback on, here's an opportunity for kids to get experience in, in this particular field. And, and we have kids who are in class for this particular, these particular fields. And the connection has just been too difficult to, uh, to, to get. And I, I don't know, I mean, and I don't think that person feels like, okay, who do I go to complain to? But it shouldn't have to come and complain to somebody to say this. There should be some flow.
Well, I'm hopeful. I mean, I'm hopeful that this kinda, here's how you can will be one thing. I can also say that our Let's Talk response rate is almost a hundred percent. So if people will use that platform, they get an answer, as so is the superintendent at GCSNC.com email. Like, we, we do return those platforms if they are at a frustration point, not that we want them to get there. So those are just other ways. But we can do a better job of sharing how we want help, what help is helpful, and then how to access that. I heard it too.
Alan?
Uh, just a comment, I appreciate seeing, between the two lists that we have looked at so far, there seems to me to be a good deal of correlation. And I think that is an opportunity for us to recognize that it's in our interest to build on the strengths and the assets and for those to become our priorities and to start there with what's working and not with our deficiencies. And so I think that these lists give us an opportunity to do that. And among those priorities, not named yet, but I'd, I'd echo all those that have been emphasized. But also, this building a strong professional culture for our teachers and staff, I think is something that resonates deeply with me and what, what I've heard throughout the district, that they feel supported, respected, appreciated, and also other things that we know compensated, that there be clear pathways for advancement and that they be able to be part of decision-making and be seated at tables where important things are considered. So appreciate the way that this process has also made that space for them.
I don't think so. I had just one question and I was gonna ask it when Ms. Reed and Ms. Crowder Phillips were here, but raising awareness of on-demand workforce development, career paths and some of the knowledge-based jobs, can we wrap our vehicles, any of our vehicles with things? Because I know when I was in the High Point parade, MLK parade and the Greensboro one, the sheriff's department, you know, their float and their vehicles, yeah, oh, that's right, you were, you and I were there in the cold. But they had the, you know, they were just advertising for jobs, you know, you know, just, you know. And is there any way to wrap any of our vehicles with information? Cause we just have those white vans and white cars and.
The only vehicles that we could wrap would be the mini buses that have been purchased and possibly the activity buses, as long as there's some areas that are left open. But the yellow buses definitely, we cannot wrap.
What about the vans?
The ones that transport students or like the GCS maintenance technology?
Whatever we can wrap that moves around, that your mobile billboard. Whatever we can wrap that moves around, that your mobile billboard. Yeah.
So, decals are required by the state to be what we have on our, on our vehicles. So, that fleet, we cannot wrap them, unfortunately. I think, as you've probably noticed, many municipalities can only use branded items for their, their services only, and our, our fleet is no different, because we're mandated by the state.
But why can't the city do? They've got all that stuff on their electric buses.
Yeah, so we are, we are governed by a different ordinance. So, we have been told that our activity buses, we can do something with those, as well as our, our mini buses, which are newly purchased items. So, we're targeting those two as something that the state has given us the allowance to do. But our fleet, unfortunately, the other fleet vehicles, we cannot.
Whatever we can, I think, would be great, you know, people pay attention to those things. I, you know, the city buses are, you know, sending messages, whether it's health or housing or something. But, yeah, it'd be great to look into that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so the last piece is kind of where the buckets seem to be falling at this point. So, I'll just read over these and then ask for your feedback, and then I have an ask of you. But the first one is accelerating learning, and that really is about high-quality instruction, individualized support, and including the two things that we are seeing progress on, and that's the tutoring and the learning hubs. The second is healthy and safe schools, making sure that we're aligning resources and thinking long-term about mental health supports for students and staff, and robust school safety strategies. The ecosystem to prepare the future workforce, so awareness of credentials, pathways, preparation for higher ed and transition programs, equitable access and outcomes, instruction, access to advanced coursework, eliminating gaps between white students and students of color. And then transparent and efficient operations is the fifth bucket. Thinking through transparent communication, fiscal stewardship, particularly given where we are now. And so, those are kind of the buckets that seem to be playing out across groups. They're still big, they're still ambitious, we're still working through, is it, is the wording right? How will we measure each one? But this is kind of taking what we've heard and putting it in, into an, an emerging direction. I am going to ask board members who are willing to host a community conversation in their district or in their whole county, just kind of to float this. I mean, I, we, we've done some on a schedule, but if there's a group, or a school, or a place, we could expand our reach a little further and float this with some other groups. And so, that concludes this piece, unless you have any other lingering questions or comments.
Chrissy?
I do have one that I didn't even think of until we looked at this slide, which is kind of funny, considering what I do for a living. I'm curious, you know, we've got the focus on the high dosage tutoring, the learning hubs, all those things. But you've also called out as well, high-quality classroom instruction. And so, you know, we're working with individual groups of students, but what are plans for what we're going to be doing in the classrooms to help, really help elevate those students, provide teachers the support they need, the professional development? Are we using the right curriculum? Do we need to reevaluate curriculum, that type of thing? Can you speak to any of that?
That is where that lives, is that first word, because it gets to all, so good, that's a good point. And so, yeah, the high-quality instruction is not just, is the, it is, is the material right? Is the delivery right? And do teachers have the support they need to execute it? And do administrators have the tools that they need to monitor, evaluate, and support? So, that's what falls there. And we do have to reevaluate curriculum all the time, and so, that, that is part of what comes there.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, and then Kim.
I just wanted to acknowledge, right here, we've got healthy and safe schools. And I just wanted to put a shout-out there real quick. Last year, we had all kinds of supply chain issues. Our, our cafeteria workers were working very hard. And so, I know you were out there in the schools, looking at everything, going over everything. And I've been, you know, in the schools a lot this year, too, and, you know, feed two kids there. Since the supply chain issues have resolved, I've got to tell you, we can look at that and I think conclusively say that that was the problem, because this year, y'all, kids are eating good. And their meals look fantastic, they've got all variety of stuff to eat. So, I think that is a fantastic example of, you know, when we put the proper tools in our, our, our school employees' hands, it gets where it needs to go, and it's fantastic. So, just want to put the plug in there real quick to our cafeteria staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
I want to be first.
All right, I got your, your input.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Oakley and staff, for very informed material and information. And thank you, board members, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Diane, I made the call on you.
Okay, I just wanted to announce, because when we have board meetings the next day, but we are, the downtown Greenway is having a dedication of the Ascension by artist Radcliffe Bailey on Wednesday, February the eighth, at 4:00 p.m. at the corner of Eastgate City Boulevard and Marl Boulevard. For those of you who may not know, the, the, the downtown Greenway has been a labor of love and care since 2008, and we are almost to the end of it. So, this particular piece of public art, I think you, it will argue. The, the last piece of it was installed today. So, if you drive by there, you can actually see it, but it's very beautiful. It's a base with a, a ladder that extends into the sky. And it has a very significant meaning to the eastern part of, of Greensboro. So, I, I just wanted to go ahead and make you guys aware of that, if you haven't seen it, and, you know, get people to come out to that. And then there will be a reception afterwards at the historic Magnolia House, which sits on the hill just above where, on, on Garl Street. But if you look up, you'll see that from where this particular piece of public art is. So, I want to give kudos to Daphne Saunders and all of her staff and all of the work, because, I mean, you know, if, if you knew what it took to put these various pieces of public art in for this, for the green, for the total Greenway, which is four, almost five miles. And so, if you are healthy enough and want to walk it, go at it. But they do do little golf cart tours, if you want them, so. And, and the Greenway comes right down here at the next corner from this office. Thank you, Madam Chair. Four o'clock on February the eighth. Thank you.
Announcement. The grand reopening of Pila Center would take place on Saturday from 10:30 to 11:30. That's on Sykes Avenue. Again, the grand reopening of Pila Center would take place on Saturday from 10:30 to 11:30.
Thank you for the shout-out portion of this meeting. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Aye, those opposed? All right, thank you, good evening.